Good evening. The eighty-sixth regular meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for members, the press, and members of the public who are joining us this evening, we please ask that you ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum placed in silence so we do not disrupt tonight's proceedings. Tonight, we do not have an invocation, but I'll ask everyone to take a quick moment of silence. Thank you, and at this time, I ask everyone to stand and please join me in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Conway, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Stokes, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found in the beginning of page two on tonight's agenda.
You skipped me here.
Did I skip you?
Yes, you did.
Actually, we have to go back. Madam Clerk, if you could please, yeah, if you could, now we're going to proceed into the adoption of the journal, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the journal for the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting proceedings on the councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is truly adopted. Now, bill signed by the mayor can be found in the beginning of page two. At this time, we're going to go into executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-four Siddiq Ali, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Six.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-five Antaya DeShields, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District One.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-six Kalila Harris, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-seven Billy M. Malcolm, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Seven.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-eight Raymond A. Winbush, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Three.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-four-nine Exa Carey, member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Four.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-zero Lillian Sparks Robinson, member, Baltimore City Women's Commission, District Eight.
This bill, this nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Now, we're going to turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-five-nine Francis Scott Key Bridge, actions and remedies for the purpose of exercising the city's authority granted under City Charter Article Two, Ten Harbor Docks and Wharfs, Forty-seven General Welfare, Two, One, provide for the preservation of the navigation of the Patapsico River and its tributaries, Two, prevent injury to navigation or health, and Three, maintain the peace and good government and health and welfare of the city of Baltimore by establishing that in a cause of action arising out of the elision between a ship, the MV Dolly and a Francis Scott Key Bridge on March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, the city of Baltimore shall be entitled to recover for economic loss, providing the city solicitor with the authority to establish certain, certain rules and regulations to carry out the provisions of this ordinance, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the elision between a ship, the MV Dolly, and a Francis Scott Key Bridge on March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. Sponsor the administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We all understand and know the importance of this particular bill. It is going to be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. How it is assigned to that committee, I ask all councilmembers to really stay up on, I guess, the development of that bill and the process in which it's going to work through the council. This is a priority of not just the administration, but also this body. And again, please make sure that you are aware, staying up. Have any questions or concerns, make sure we get them addressed as quickly as possible. Again, this bill has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-zero, sale of property, ten-twelve East Forty-third Street for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at ten-twelve East Forty-third Street, Block five-one-nine-two, Lot zero-five-nine, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-one, repeal of ordinance nine-nine-five-seven-three as amended by ordinance zero-zero dash zero-nine-three, planned unit development, forty-two-twenty-one Shannon Drive for the purpose of repealing ordinance nine-nine dash five-seven-three as amended by ordinance zero-zero dash zero-nine-three, which designated certain property located at forty-two-twenty-one Shannon Drive, a planned unit development and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-two, city streets, opening subterranean portions of Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, and certain streets and alleys for the purpose of condemning and opening subterranean portions of Ducatelle Street and Brookfield Avenue and subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys at that part of Mount Royal Terrace as shown on plat number three-one-six dash C dash three, sheets one and two dated June eighth, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Whitman, Rakerden Associates LLP and filed in the Office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-three, city streets, closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mount Royal Terrace for the purpose of condemning and closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mount Royal Terrace as shown on plat number three-one-six dash C dash three-A, sheets one through five, and dated June eighth, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Whitman, Rakerden Associates LLP and filed in the City of Baltimore Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-four, sale of property, subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mount Royal Terrace, Group Four for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mount Royal Terrace as shown on plat three-zero-six dash C dash three-B, sheets one through five, filed with the Department of Transportation and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-five, city streets, closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by Westwood Avenue, North Mount Street, Pressman Street, and Appleton Street for the purpose of condemning and closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by Westwood Avenue, North Mount Street, Pressman Street, and Appleton Street as shown on plat number three-one-six dash C dash four-A, sheets one through five, dated September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Whitman, Rakerden Associates LLP and filed in the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
Two-four dash zero-five-six-six, City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-six, city streets, opening subterranean portions of North Monroe Street, McKean Avenue, and a ten-foot alley for the purpose of condemning and opening subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by Westwood Avenue, Pressman Street, McKean Avenue, and Appleton Street as shown on plat number three-one-six dash C dash four, sheets one through three, dated September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Whitman, Rakerden Associates LLP and filed in the Office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-seven, sale of property, subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of North Mount Street, Pressman Street, Appleton Street, and Westwood Avenue for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of North Mount Street, Pressman Street, Appleton Street, and Westwood Avenue as shown on plat three-one-six dash C dash four-B, sheets one through five, and filed with the Department of Transportation and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Torrance and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. The previous bills that we talked about regarding the subterranean sale and opening and blocking of streets is related to the Amtrak boring work. So just wanted members of the general public to understand and know that's the tunnel work that's being done or proposed to be done in West Baltimore. That's being introduced by the councilman of the district, Councilman Torrance, who's not with us today, to speak on behalf of it, as well as the administration. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-eight, Community Relations Commission, powers and duties, complaint period for the purpose of increasing the time within which complaints of unlawful practices must be filed with the Community Relations Commission, making certain related amendments and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Porter and the administration.
At this time, the council would like to welcome the sponsored bill to speak on behalf of this bill. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill aligns with Baltimore City's Community Relations Commission Discrimination Investigation Timeline with that, with, with that of its state counterpart, the Maryland Commission on Civil Rights, by changing the timeline from a hundred and eighty days from the last date of alleged discrimination to three hundred days from the last date of alleged discrimination. This bill intends to ensure that Baltimore City residents and visitors know that they can file a complaint with the CRC if they believe they've been discriminated against at an establishment within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. This bill is sponsored by the administration, as well as Councilwoman Porter. See the hand raised of Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Councilwoman Burnett, Chairman Stokes. Again, this bill has been assigned to education, workforce, and youth. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill. City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-six-nine, quarterly reporting of criminal citations for the purpose of requiring the Baltimore Police Department and the mayor's office of neighborhood safety and engagement, or its successor, agency, and inviting the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City and relevant law enforcement to appear before the city council quarterly to report on the law, to report on the enforcement of specified citations, establishing certain reporting metrics and guidelines, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the quarterly reporting of certain information related to the enforcement of specified citations. Sponsor Burnett.
I would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Burnett. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in twenty-twenty-three, the State's, Office of State's Attorney rolled out the Citation Docket, which is a promise to reinstate broken windows policing where essentially you're giving citations for quality-of-life crimes. Since the rollout, there has been a lot of concerns raised in the Public Safety Committee and within the media pertaining to a number of issues, inconsistent training for law enforcement, lack of uniform enforcement across the city, and concerns about equity. No written policies or procedures, missing or handwritten citations, incorrect court dates leading to people getting bench warrants for not showing up to court. There's just been a tremendous amount of missteps, not only from that office, but just the rollout itself has been pretty troubled. My concern is that, given we are in a consent decree with the Department of Justice, one of the issues that was brought up during that process was this sort of issue around inequity in enforcement, particularly for low-level crimes and targeting Black and Brown people in particular. And so my concern is, given how many millions of dollars we're spending to stay compliant with the consent decree, these types of programs can really be a setback for the city. And so to improve the program, this bill is a, an effort to sort of fill in the gaps. So we're requiring data and recording mechanisms to be put in place. We want to measure the efficiency of the program, and most importantly, the equity of enforcement so that to some neighborhoods, you know, we've seen have gotten an inordinate amount of warnings and some are not, but also there's, again, there's issues logistically with the coordination of the program. And so the, the council in the Public Safety Committee has requested several times that the, the agency consider better dating and tracking, tracking practices.
What agency are you referring to, just to speak on the record?
The Office of State's Attorney in coordination with the police department and the other law enforcement agencies to do a better job essentially with capturing how this program is being implemented and ensuring that we aren't sort of making the same mistakes that we have in the past. And so my hope is that this body will support this effort. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any co-sponsors to that? See Councilwoman Ramos, see Councilwoman Porter, and see Chairman Bullock. Okay, sure. And Madam Executive Secretary, could you please ensure that Chairman Bullock is added to twenty-four dash zero-five-six-eight Community Relations Commission, powers and duties, compliant period? We also would like to open it up for Madam Vice President for the same twenty-four dash zero-five-six-eight as well as Chairman Conway. So we have that for two-four zero-five-six-eight. Now, back to, no problem, Madam Vice President. Now, back to two-four zero five-six-nine. I think we saw the hand of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, and Chairman Bullock to be added to that bill. That bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-seven-zero, city property, naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground.
At this time, I'd like to recognize.
For the, no, for the, for the purpose of naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground. Sponsor Ramos.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. We do have a brand-new playground going into Lake Montebello. That playground that was there before was damaged in the uprising and was never replaced until now. So I want to thank the administration and our opera funds to be able to do that. I could not think of a better way to celebrate a new playground and also to honor my predecessor than to name a playground after her as she spent decades, Councilwoman Clark, and then Council President Clark, spent decades caring for and advocating for and doing the good work for children and families. So I'm looking forward to the dedication and I'm, thanks to my colleagues and Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-seven-one, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district, variances seven-thirty East Preston Street for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district on the property known as seven-thirty East Preston Street, Block one-one-four-two-B, Lot zero-two-eight, is outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-seven-two, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district and district variances seventeen-thirty North Broadway for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district on the property known as seventeen-thirty North Broadway, Block one-one-zero-nine, Lot zero-five-three, is outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-seven-three, repeal of ordinance zero-four-eight-two-four, planned unit development, nineteen-oh-one Light Street, nineteen-twenty-one Light Street, Bed of Johnson Street, and Block nineteen-forty-seven, Lot one for the purpose of repealing ordinance zero-four dash eight-two-four, which designated certain property located at nineteen-oh-one Light Street, nineteen-twenty-one Light Street, Bed of Johnson Street, and Block one-nine-four-seven, Lot one, a residential planned unit development and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-seven-four, rezoning, nineteen-twenty-one Light Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as nineteen-twenty-one Light Street, Block one-zero-three-eight, Lot zero-zero-five, is outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R-eight zoning district to the C-one zoning district and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the first resolution.
City Council Resolution two-four dash zero-two-two-five-R, investigational hearing, missing persons, policies, and procedures for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Police Department, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, including the Juvenile Division, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Maryland Department of Human Services, including Child Protective Services, and representatives from relevant community organizations to brief the city council regarding policies and procedures pertaining to incidents of missing persons and requesting data concerning such incidents, as well as data regarding staffing and turnover, including Baltimore City Police Department Missing Persons Unit data and district-specific data for the last five years. Sponsor Burnett and Porter.
At this time, I would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Burnett. Missing persons.
Wait, I already got it. So this is a informational hearing to do a deeper dive into how law enforcement handles missing persons cases. As we see, I'm sure your social media feeds and television feeds are often featuring a lot of Black and Brown women, children in our city that are going missing every single day. Thankfully, some are found quickly, others not as quickly. But I think it's important for the council to better understand how we address missing children or missing people in the city of Baltimore, how we lean into that work and how we can do, I think, a better job at not only finding folks, but also activating our citizens to be those additional eyes and ears on the ground. And so I'm hoping that this could be a, a good discussion for a very serious topic that's been impacting our city very recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Madam Executive Secretary, please use your microphone, folks. When you call to speak and wait to be called upon. But Madam Executive Secretary, if you could please add Councilman Zeke Cohen to twenty-four dash zero-two-two-five-R investigational hearing, missing persons, policies, and procedures.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Me too.
As well as Councilwoman Ramos. Are there anyone else? We'd like to have Chairman Bullock, Madam Vice President Middleton, anyone else? Councilman Glover, going once, going twice? All right. Again, that will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. As discussed, you can find the consent calendar, section A, at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is now approved. We'll now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to read short titles for the remainder of the hearing.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the remainder of today's meeting. Hearing and seeing none. We are in short titles. The first committee we're going to go to is ECD. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-three, city streets, closing a portion of Marion Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Madam Vice President, Chair of the Committee. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-three-oh-three. This bill was heard on July ninth, twenty-twenty-four. It was recommended as favorable. I move the bill as favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are, that was finding of the facts? Madam VP?
Not on this one.
You don't have findings of facts? That bill is approved?
It's not amended, though.
It's not amended?
No. Did you say amended?
Oh.
We're good?
I move this bill as favorable.
All right, it's been moved, it's been probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-one, city streets, closing a portion of Boston Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, the Economic and Community Development Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill. I move to adopt the finding of facts.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are now adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-five, air rights, closing a portion of New Kirk Street.
I would like to recognize Vice President of Council, Madam Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill. I move to adopt the finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Aye.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-four-seven, landmark list exteriors thirty-one-ten Elm Avenue.
I would like to recognize Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
The Economic and Community Development Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill with amendments. I move the amendments as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And, Mr. President, I move the bill favorable, favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-four-eight-six, zoning conditional use banquet hall, variance six-oh-one Cherry Hill Road.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Vice President, Chair of the Committee. The floor is yours.
The Economic and Community Development Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill. I move to adopt the findings of facts.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are now adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And, Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam VP, we're still on this bill. Floor is yours.
And I move to, to invoke city rule, City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Oh, actually, roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer. Middleton.
Aye.
Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The bill moves to third reader for same day. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-zero-four, zoning, open space district, conditional use cultural facility and parking lot, variances CC Jackson, Park and Library, forty-nine-ten Park Heights Avenue.
The body would like to ecstatically and emphatically recognize Sharon, Madam Vice President, for this bill. The floor is yours.
Yes, the Economic and Committee, the Economic and Development Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill. I move to adopt the finding of facts.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Sorry. Come here. Madam Vice President, are there amendments, committee amendments to that bill?
And this was Bill twenty-four dash oh-five-oh-four?
Yes.
Uh, yes, they are.
They are amendments, so if you could please call the amendments.
There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk.
Thank you so much, sir.
And I, is this the last bill?
No, we still have the conditional use.
Okay, this is the Cherry Hill Road.
This is Park Heights, this is forty-nine-ten.
Okay.
This forty-nine-ten Park Heights Avenue. So I, I think we have to motion for the committee amendments.
Move the amendments.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's been moved in probably second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are now adopted. Madam VP, we're still on that bill.
And then I move the finding of facts.
We already did that.
I already did the finding of facts, so I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill now will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, please call in the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-one-four, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district variances thirty-fourty Barclay Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Vice President of Council, Madam Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hold on one second. Okay, this bill was heard on July second, twenty-twenty-four. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are now adopted.
There is also a floor amendment to the bill.
Mr. President, I have a floor amendment on this bill. It corrects a technical error. It's a very simple um change to the block lot. And it was uh included in everybody's packet this afternoon.
And I move the floor amendment as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say, I see some unreadiness. Does everyone had a chance to look at the amendments? Want to make sure we're all good with it?
So basically, it's a technical amendment clarifying a typographical error and placing the correct block number in the bill.
Correct.
Is this uh, is the administration okay with this, the Law Department?
Yeah, it just corrects a a number error.
I mean, the Law Department has signed off on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? It's a technical amendment. Uh, so it's uh-
So I move the floor amendment as favorable.
It's been, it's been motioned, it's probably uh seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this floor amendment has been approved. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And then I also move to adopt the finding of facts.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts have now been adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And then finally, finally, we move the bill um favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill moves forward, be printed for third reading as amended. Now we're gonna turn Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-four-one, RPP Area Thirty, South Baltimore East, Exception sixteen-hundred South Charles Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-four-eight-one, Revenue Obligations, Waste Water Projects.
Body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-four-eight-two, Revenue Obligations, Water Projects.
Body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-one-eight, South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District and Management Authority Renewal through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Body would like to yield the floor to Chairwoman McCray.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-four, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, twenty million.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCr- McCray.
Mr. President, did we do two-four dash zero-four-eight-three?
No, we have not. No, we have not. Sorry, we um, well, while we have that call, we're just gonna-
What do you do?
We'll, we'll do it back in order. Madam um, Madam uh Chair.
City- City Council Bill two-four dash zero-four-eight-three, Revenue Obligations, Stormwater Projects, Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount.
The body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, the next bill, please.
All right, I'll do City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-one-eight again for South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District and Management Authority Renewal through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July the second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-four, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, twenty million.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July the second. Um, I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Stay on this bill.
And, Mr. President, I also move to invoke City Council Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? Having probably moved a second, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett? Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
Bill will move forward on third reading today. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-five, Bond Issue School Loan, fifty-five million.
Body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July the second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Stay on this bill, Madam uh Chair. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? Since there's a second, Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett? Bullock?
Aye.
Porter? Stokes?
Yes.
Glover? Ramos?
The bill moves to third reading for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-six, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan, fifty million.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill. I move the bill favorably.
It's this, it's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill uh it will be printed for third reading. We're gonna stay on this bill, Madam uh Chairwoman. The floor is yours.
I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway?
Please say aye, folks.
Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
The bill moves to third reader today. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-seven, Bond Issue Public Infrastructure Loan, a hundred and twenty-five million.
The body would like to yield to Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, the bill will be printed for third reading. We're gonna stay on this bill. Uh, Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
The bill moves to third reading for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-four-five, Tax Credits Historic Properties Application Extension.
Body would like to yield the time to Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-four-seven, RPP Area B, Washington Village, Revisions.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the resolution, excuse me, I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Resolution two-four dash zero-two-two-zero-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class B D-seven License to a Class A-seven License for Use at fifteen-fifteen Pennsylvania Avenue, two-one-two-one-seven.
The body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the resolution as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Sorry, we have to go into a roll call. This is a resolution, so Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes?
Yes.
Glover? Ramos?
The resolution is now adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could call, please call the next resolution.
City Council Resolution two-four dash zero-two-two-one-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class B D-seven License to a Class A-seven License for Use at thirty-six-oh-one Elm Avenue, two-one-two-one-one.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this bill on July the second, twenty-twenty-four. I move the resolution as favorable.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. If you could please call a roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
This resolution has been adopted. Thank you so much, uh, Chairwoman McCray for pinch hitting uh for Chairman Costello tonight. Uh, we'll now turn uh to bills on third reading for final passage that require invocation of the City Council Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill and the roll.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-four-eight-six, Zoning Conditional Use Banquet Hall Variance six-oh-one Cherry Hill Road. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-four, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, twenty million. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-five, Bond Issue School Loan, fifty-five million. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-six, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan, fifty million. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-three-seven, Bond Issue Public Infrastructure Loan, a hundred and twenty-five million. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
That bill is approved. That completes the business before the desk tonight. At this time, we're gonna turn to committee announcements. Uh, committee members, we're gonna go to Madam Vice President first. Do you have any committee?
Yes, I have a pile of them. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear Bill number twenty-three dash oh-three-five-seven Tuesday, August twentieth. Um, here in Council Chambers at two P M., and that is the Strengthening Renters' Safety Act. Sponsor, Council Member Cohen. Um, on Sep- on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty-twenty-four, at two P M. here in Council Chambers, we're also gonna hear twenty-four dash oh-four-seven-eight, and that's the rezoning of twelve-fourteen to twelve-twenty-four Holland Street, twenty-one to twenty-three South Carey South Carey Street and fourteen South Stockton Street, sponsor Bullock. On, also on Tuesday, September tenth, at two oh one P M, we're going to hear twenty four dash oh four nine five, and that's also a zoning conditional use conversion of single family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district variances five oh nine, five eleven and five sixteen North Carlton Avenue, and that's sponsor Bullock. Also, on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty four, two oh two P M, we're going to hear Bill number twenty four dash oh four seven nine, and that's a rezoning of nine oh one West Mulberry Street and three seventeen to three twenty nine North Schroeder Street, two 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 North Fremont Avenue, eight eleven West Saratoga Street and two oh three North Amity Street, um, sponsor Bullock. Also, on Tuesday, September tenth, at two oh three P M, we're gonna hear Bill number twenty four dash oh five one seven, and that's a rezoning fifteen hundred fifteen oh two and fifteen oh eight De Sodas Road, and that's Council Member Porter. And also, on Tuesday, September tenth, at four oh two P M, we're gonna hear Bill number twenty three dash oh two oh four R, and that's an informational hearing on mod- modular and tiny houses benefits and challenges, sponsor Porter. And finally, on September tenth, twenty twenty four, Tuesday, we're gonna hear Bill number twenty three dash oh four three five at two oh six, and that's the zoning code modification, Council Member Schleifer.
At this time, Madam, uh, then we can go to, uh, Chairman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President, education, workforce and youth, we had, held, held a hearing on Thursday, July the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, Council Bill twenty four dash zero five two firing police retirement system benefits enhancement, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman Schleifer, seems like you got a lot of papers over there.
Oh, yeah, um, I'll start with the Ways and Means, if that's all right.
Sure.
So we got twenty three dash zero three nine two on Thursday, July twenty third at ten twenty two A M for sale of property, uh, portion of Boston Street. Twenty four dash zero five three eight, Tuesday, July twenty third at ten twenty three A M for sale of property for eleven East Old Cold Spring Lane. Twenty four dash zero five four four Tuesday, September tenth, ten A M zoning Hartford Road overlay district. Twenty four dash zero five four nine Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh one A M for zoning conditional use conversion of a single family dwelling unit to a two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district variances one thousand and two West Landville Street. I'd like to move to suspend Rule ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, hearing none, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five six zero Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh two A M, sale of property ten twelve East Forty Third Street, like to move to suspend Rule ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, suspend it, please proceed, Mr. Chair.
Twenty four dash zero five six one Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh three A M repeal of ordinance ninety nine dash five seventy three as amended by ordinance, uh, zero zero dash zero nine three planned unit development forty two twenty one Shannon Drive, move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, suspend it, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five six two Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh four A M for city streets opening of subterranean portions of Deuce Tel Street, Brookfield Avenue and certain streets and alleys, like to move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, um, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five six three Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh five A M city streets closing, uh, subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bonded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Duke Ca- Cattell Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, Newton, Newton Avenue, Callaway Avenue, Park Avenue and Mount Royal Terrace, move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, please proceed, Mr. Chair.
Twenty four dash zero five six four Tuesday, September tenth, ten oh six A M, uh, for Council Bill twenty four dash zero five six four sale of property, uh, so portions of streets and alleys bonded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North, Utah, is this the same one? Nope.
No, it's different.
Um, uh, Deuce, Deuce Tel Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, White Lock Street, uh, Newton Avenue, Callaway Avenue, Park Avenue, Mount Royal Terrace Group Four, suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, please proceed, Mr. Chair.
Twenty four dash zero five six five Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh seven A M for city streets closing, uh, subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bonded by Westwood Avenue, North Mount Street, Pressman Street and Appleton Street, uh, suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five six six Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh eight A M for city streets opening, subterranean portions of North Monroe Street, McKean Avenue and a ten foot alley. Suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five six seven Tuesday, September tenth at ten oh nine A M, a sale of property, portions of streets and alleys bonded by portions of North Mount Street, Pressman Street, Appleton Street and the Westwood Avenue, uh, I'd like to move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Twenty four dash zero five seven zero Tuesday, September tenth at ten ten A M, city property naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground. Suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, uh, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Council Bill twenty four dash zero five seven one Tuesday, September tenth at ten eleven A M zoning conditional use conversions of a single family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district variances, uh, seven thirty East Preston Street, uh, suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five seven two Tuesday, September tenth at ten twelve A M for zoning conditional use conversion of a single family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district variances seventeen thirty North Broadway, like to move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Twenty four dash zero five seven three Tuesday, September tenth, ten thirteen A M, repeal ordinance oh four dash eight two four planned unit development nineteen oh one Light Street, nineteen twenty one Light Street and the bed of Johnson Street and block nineteen forty seven lot one, I move to suspend Rules ten three to announce a hearing.
Without, uh, objection, Rules ten, City Council Rule ten three will be suspended, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Twenty four dash zero five seven four eleven fourteen A M for rezoning nineteen twenty one Light Street.
Thank you so much, now turning over to rules, Mr. Chair.
Um, or the rules legislative investigating. Like to call Bill number twenty two, C C twenty two dash zero two seven five, um, August twenty second at four P M ordinance of ethics conforming changes. Uh, E A twenty four dash zero two four two August twenty second at four thirty, Shannon Harris, member of the Baltimore City Civilian Review Board, E A twenty four dash zero two four oh August twenty second at four thirty one, Ronnie Brown, member of the Baltimore City Civilian Review Board, E A twenty four dash zero two four three August twenty second, four thirty two, Aaron Maven, member of the Baltimore Civilian Review Board, E A twenty four dash zero two three nine August twenty second at four thirty three, uh, Hakai Amai, member of the Baltimore City Civilian Review Board, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, thank you for filling in for Ways and Means, are there any additional committee announcements, going once, going twice, thank you so much, now we're moved to regular announcements, are there any regular announcements from members at this time? Hearing and seeing none, Madam VP, if you could take us out?
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at five P M, at this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the one hundred and six victims of homicide this year.
Thank you, there being no new business before the death of this council, this will conclude the eighty first meeting of the seventy third term of your Baltimore City Council, Baltimore, we absolutely love you.